And we will call, I will, I will call. Board of Education meeting for the Brown Libiate Lillian Independent School District number 2534 to order. It is 7:05. Sorry for the delay between meetings, but it was necessary. It was a good, good work session that we had prior. Talk about the question. Jeff, can you mute a minute? Questions and answers to questions that were asked during the public hearing and answer those as well as an update on the proposed plan of, of referendum. So. I'll just mute him for a second. Jeff, I just muted you for a second. I'm sorry. You're kind of loud. You're a little noisy. It's okay. So, all right. So you'll have to unmute yourself though, so you can, John, can you start your video too?
John.
Just showing your name.
Everybody knows my face.
I know, but it's kind of nice. The rest of us have to have our faces on here. So it's kind of nice if you do too. So I think it's just a fair thing. So, okay.
You can take my face off if you want.
Well, I totally could take my whole body off here right now, but we're just going to get started. So we will begin with the approval of the agenda and there are, before we do that, there are a couple of things to add here. So starting with personnel, Assistant Dance Team Coach was currently open, but now Heidi Gross has stepped into that slot. Heidi Gross. And then moving on to page number two, ninth grade boys basketball coach was open and it is going to be filled by Dane Gillespie. G.I.L.L.E.S.P.I.E. You needed that spelling. And then a couple of things that were corrected in the number five under new business approved the 2019-2020 master agreement. There was a mistake in the
Agreement.
Yes, thank you. Well, I just look, I gotta admit somebody. Okay. All right. So there, the student council representative was listed under A, which should have been listed under E, and that has been changed. So we are going to go there and a couple of other things. We need to have a work session with Ryan on November 9th. So that is a day to add to upcoming dates. So anything else, Mr. Bransoy?
I think you've covered most. Thank you.
You did. All right. So let's keep moving on. And so with all, with those changes, could I get a motion to approve the agenda? Okay, so motion is approved by Jamie Boleen and seconded by Tracy Bookdell. Any questions or discussion on any of that? Hearing nothing, we'll vote and we will do that by roll call vote and we will start with Sandy.
Hi.
Tracy?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. Recognition of visitors to the board meeting. Thank you all for coming out. Well, you're at home. So that's a pretty awesome place to be. So it's a good thing we have the technology to do this and I'll stay safe. So thank you for spending some time with us this evening. I will try to keep it moving along. So, all right, we are going to go on to a public forum. And this is an opportunity for the public, for public input. It is a time of listening by the board and each, we allow each person up to two minutes of time and I will be keeping time here. So if you would like to speak, what I'm going to have you do is unmute yourself and state your name. And I will acknowledge you. And then once every, once I get all of the names of people who want to speak, I will, we'll start out with our time for each person. So if anybody would like to speak, please unmute yourself and state your name. All right, that was the first one. I'd say it again. If you would like to speak, please unmute yourself and state your name. All right, one more time, just so nobody, I don't want anybody to miss it. So, because this is a time for, of speaking and listening, speaking by you, listening by the board. So if you would like to speak, please unmute yourself and state your name. All right, hearing no one, we will move on. So moving on to consent items. We only need one motion to approve all the consent items and right now or for this month, the consent items are approving the bills for payment and approving the minutes of the September 28th, 2020 meeting.
So move, say it all.
Motion is made by saying it all. Seconded by Bookdell. Any questions or discussion on either of those items? Hearing nothing, we will vote and we'll begin with Tracy.
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Andy?
Hi.
And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. We are moving on to number six, personnel. Number one, approve the resignation of Ethan Weiss, C-Squad basketball coach effective September 25th of 2020. Motion is made by Boleen. Seconded by Benson. Any discussion or questions?
Did we fill, did we fill the position?
Yep, that's what, what one of the changes was on the agenda.
Okay.
So. Okay. All right, hearing nothing else for questions or discussion, we'll begin with, we will vote and we'll begin with John.
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Andy?
Hi.
Tracy?
Hi.
And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. Number two, approve Brenda Quilar, food service staff as a cook helper effective October 20th of 2020. Pay grade three of the 2017-2019 MSA master agreement.
So move, say it all.
Motion is made by saying it all. Seconded by Benson. Any questions or discussion? Hearing nothing, we will vote and we'll begin with Jamie.
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Andy?
Hi.
Tracy?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. Number three, approve the 2020-2021 winter extracurricular assignment as follows. Head Dance Team Coach Karen Smith, Assistant Dance Team Coach Melissa Hanzey, Assistant Dance Team Coach Heidi Gross, Volunteer Coach Makaya Ryberg, Head Basketball Coach Lee Bruston, Assistant Boys Basketball Coach Darren Sagatol, Ninth Grade Boys Basketball Coach Dane Gillespie, Junior High Boys Basketball Coaches Matt Sullivan and Dan Gross, Head Wrestling Coach Matt Zupke, Assistant Wrestling Coach Nick Stepple, Junior High Wrestling Coach Tristan Eastman, Volunteer Coaches, there are three, we're going to go with Manuel Garcia, Derek Lothert, and Zach Revere, Head Girls Basketball Coach Brian Kingery, Assistant Girls Basketball Coach Bailey Kubash, Ninth Grade Girls Basketball Coach Mallory Stepple, Junior High Basketball Coaches Theodore Leggy and Steve Solom, and a Volunteer Coach in Karen Martenson. Everything is filled, so.
Jill, can I ask a question?
We can make a motion first. Thanks. All right, motion is made by Boleen, seconded by Bookdell, and questions and discussion?
I thought at one time we talked about all head coaches were going to be at the same level.
That.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry. Yep, good, good question. Just, we have to get that approved yet. So, any other questions on any of those items?
Yeah. When you look at what level they're at, that's, that's the, I'm going to call it the old contract. And where they're going to be, for example, I'll just take Karen Smith. She is at level B. Next year or this coming season, she should be at level A. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the contract passing.
So should there be some kind of statement in there saying that they'll be paid under the new extracurricular assignment schedule? For a point of clarity, because I, this afternoon, I was looking at this, I thought Karen Smith, level B, she's been here for, you know, many, a number of years. Why would she only be at a level B? And then it dawned on me that was probably the current contract that's in place and, and will stay in place until a new one is approved and then she'll be moved to the level eight.
Would new contracts would be submitted though to their employees to sign? Is that correct? I mean, they would have to resign something after?
Can't hear.
I was just asking if new contracts would be submitted to these individuals for them to sign because it will change?
This is the, the level, the level is where the placement is with the person that's in that or in the position of that. It's the, level A is the senior band, the musical director, robotics mentor. Level B is the
This is all athletics though, right?
You're talking athletics.
Yep, yep. So. Okay, so would, how do you guys want to word this? Do we need?
We're approving the old contract amount. So, I mean, once the new contract is
Do you feel that we need anything in here stating?
I don't.
Okay. I mean, Jamie, are you okay with that? You made the motion as is. I mean, I trust that they're going to get paid the current contract amount once, once that passes. Okay. All right, John, are you okay with that?
Well, my thought is that maybe next, we can approve them, but next meeting, could we have the, the updated assignments?
So basically, the assignments with what they're getting paid or what their level and stuff are.
Right.
Should see. I, yeah, I don't see a problem with that and make sure that gets done. So, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, any other discussion? Hearing nothing, we will vote and we'll begin with Melissa.
Of steam.
That's right. Jeff?
Hi.
Andy? Tracy?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. All right, moving on to reports, we'll have our superintendent's report.
Okay, the first item I have there is what we've spent most of our time on in our work session, but our facilities update and so we'll I don't know if you've got any additional questions. We still have Ryan here. If there's went through the, all the questions and plus had a good discussion, so. I just think I'd like to share that the working with the EDA in Bird Island the last few weeks is they've brought a lot of things to take a look at, their exploration. I think they're looking forward, in the forward direction and I think that's a real positive. And I just got a today, got an email of the EDA. They met today at noon and they selected names for their committee and I don't know if I get to be the one to say publicly what it is, but I think it would help everybody. So I think it's good. It said their name of their group is going to be Chalkboard Collective. Which they threw out a lot of names out and, but this is one that they selected. So I think it's going to be they set up three different goals and I want to share those with you so that you're aware of it. Number one was preservation of the Bold Elementary School building, building from deteriorating any further. Number two is assuming their building will no longer be used as a school, determine feasible reuses of spaces and associated cost estimates for major improvements. And number three is determine what costs, demolition, evac, roof improvements, et cetera. Could possibly be included in the, in the school board referendum, bond referendum, and submit to the school board for their consideration by November 13th. And so the EDA secretary, Deb DeSantis. And so there's three goals that that committee has put together and I share those because I've been in two of their meetings now and two meetings and they've been very progressive about trying to say, yeah, what are we going to do? And they're very concerned and so I'm glad that they're, they're taking a look at this and they've got some good leaders. England's involved, so I mean, I think that's a plus for, they've got the expertise and so I also have mentioned to them that Ryan is working with us, so Bold has been to work with us, but one of the sitter conditions that we accepted Bold as an architect for us was that to work with England and let them. So I think we'll let them know that so that we're working as a team and not, not competing. So, so I thank Deb for sharing that with us today and that's why I thought I would, would include that with my The second one was all the CARES dollars and gave you a lot of things that you can, I'll give you a test on this tomorrow so you can tell me what all those abbreviations stand for. You got GEAR and you got ESAR and you got CRF and then we got the counties again. So there's a lot of grants and dollars that have come through from last March dealing with COVID. And the expenses is unbelievable what additional we're putting out, taking for our building and our facility and for our kids. So this is much needed. And when you look at all those dollars and you and you think that it's going to suffice and it isn't. We've got additional staffing, additional cleaning and lots of different products that we've got on and so it's, it's a big, an expense, but the first one there was GEAR, that's your Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund. And you've probably read about this in the paper. It's come out of the office of the governor and we're working with MDE. It's come out with a fund that we have to, it's, we've got the beginning of the school year till December 31st to fund our, for our budget for that. So the budget's been presented. Now we're fine tuning it, but it has to be spent and the product, whatever it is, has to be in the district by December 31st. So short timeframe. And so it was really meant to be emergency funded for fall work. And so, so we're putting we got the budget together and met with Lindsay today again and, and so we're moving forward with that. And so we have to be careful because whatever budget has to be spent by the 31st of December. So we want to make sure whatever we spend, it will be, otherwise we lose those dollars. And so we're, we had to fine tune it to date. We had it on some budget items that we don't know. And so we had to cut back and we had to put more on a different fund that we know that will, will be in order. ESAR, that's the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. And that's distributed through our title program, 90% of it is. And so that is money that we're, we're able to receive starting March 13th of 2020 and we've got till September 30th of 2022 to utilize those dollars. And so that's more of a long range, coming from the federal government, working through the state. So I want to share that with you and that's a pretty broad, there's lots of different areas that can be used with and of course, there's not going to be any problem of getting, getting that they can care of. So then your CRF, that's your coronavirus relief funds and, and that's a part of the CARES act and was added to it as far as dollars available for, for COVID. Then we did have Candy High County and Rendall County also get involved with CARES and so to Rendall County Bold gets, is 14,000 towards our, our social work position. $6,000 will be designated towards our school health contract. And so, and so that'll help with that. Also, they gave 20,000 to Woodland Centers, which is in Wilmer, which is for mental health support. We have, they have an office that just opened up in our building, like you heard earlier. 20,000 which goes between, is, it's used between Bold and RCW. So we each get 10,000 of that and so that's going to help. PAC Family is getting, for families is getting 15,000 from the county. And this is for SCL training for staff. And then there are also additional 10,000 for trichum and SCL equipment. And so that's all things that are just coming out now and going to work. The county of Rendall has put a lot of money towards the mental health perspective. And we realized that from last spring, what impact distant learning had with our kids and our families. And so it was a big concern and I think the county saw that. And, and so they looked at contributing a big, a lot of CARE dollars to, to mental health. And what for our students and staff. St. Mary's has got a part from, for their school health contract also. And then Candy High County, which we only have 5% of our population there. But they also contributed flat $10,000 to be used for the district for what we can, we can designate what they are. They were more flexible with that and just gave us a flat 10,000 and said use where, where it's best for use. So that's what we're going to do. A lot of money, a lot of dollars, I should say, but we're going to get all settings done with, with COVID. I don't know. It's just going to, takes a lot of money. See, I've got the shared with you an earlier email about Tom Melcher. I've got all respect for him about school finances. Nobody in the state of Minnesota knows more about school financing. And he's retired. He's been in for 40 years. And so he's really a, he's got a tremendous background in that and so he's been leading a, a school finance work group this year and trying to design a, seeing what we can help to fund public education more equal across the state of Minnesota. There's a real inequity now metro to, to outstate. And MRA has done a really great job in trying to keep dollars coming out to the, to outstate. But it, you know, there's a real inequity there. Plus, if you go and on the MSBA website, you can see his PowerPoint and I suggest, I really highly take some time to show that because he's got a lot of figures in there, a lot of details. And it, it shows inequity of what has happened with school funding since the early 2000s to his current year. It's unbelievable. And so you ask the question, then the only way schools, public schools has worked is by an excess levy. And what the districts have used all the way through all these years. The buying power is really strong. Our bills, our expenses haven't. And so I share that with you because I want you to look at that and, and right now I look at the schools on November 30th, they've got referendums. There's, there's 32 districts in greater Minnesota that's got operating levy questions. 22 are seeking increases in operating levies. Two are asking for a decrease, nine requesting renewals, 11 school districts are supporting for a capital project, a bond referendum. All those referendums are on the third. The schools, they're, they're really asking for support and help from their constituents. And I think look at that material that town put together and what, they had a, a large group, like 25 experts in the area of public financing and education, legislative people, school people, MSBA, the VAs all represented. And so it's really interesting and, but I think it's what's going to really be interesting when it comes to the legislature. For some reason, they're very hesitant to put the dollars forth, what they're going to need to look at this. They're talking mega bucks. And so it'll be interesting to watch how that develops and now that they've got this far along and I know that we've got a governor that's former teacher, strong in education, and that's a real plus for us. And so I, I really watch it as it goes and it gets into the legislature, watch what your MRA is telling you and your school board association. Keep abreast of that because it's politics and important. That's where our funding is. And so remember that. He has a leadership conference coming up in January. I think that'll be virtual. And so that'll be coming out. So we'll pick up on that later again. And then a district learning plan update. I, I asked the principals to join in here and I would like to have them. Jim is heading the, the advisory group, the council, but they both have been very active in, in our learning plans and we've had some good discussions with them. They meet every Wednesday at 2:30. And some of them have been pretty very tense. And, and so I'm going to have them share kind of some where we are with our learning plans and, and what direction we think we can go and what are the parameters we're watching. So, go ahead, you guys.
Well, I'll start off with the COVID Advisory Council. As Dale said, we meet every Wednesday and we're made up, there's approximately 25 members. We've added a few here and there. And we've really tried hard to get a cross section of, of the population, not just I, I don't want a bunch of people to all agree with one another because that's not how you get things, good solutions. It's important that we see all sides of this. We get together, we discuss the current situation. I have teachers talk about, from the elementary and from high school, talk about the general feel of what, what are people saying, what are people thinking? Then we have, we hear from the, the hospital. Tammy Flan usually speaks from the hospital's point of view. And our school nurse will talk about, you know, how many kids are out and, and that sort of thing. And then they get together and they make a recommendation as to what, what we should do with our, our current learning model. And, and a big part of their job, I kind of went out of order here. A big part of their job is then to help share that information with the public and clarify what, what it is that we're doing. And at the previous meeting, one of the things that one of our members brought up is that our, our current numbers suggest that we should be on level four of our, of our learning plan. And there's a lot of, there was a lot of concern out there. People don't, didn't understand, why are we at level two when these numbers say that we're supposed to be at level four? And there's a few things that's going on. First of all, in our group, we're looking at the most up to date numbers that the county can give us. The, the number that we really are supposed to base our decision off of is the number on the website, the State Department of Health website. Which is about two weeks old. When we look at the, the current numbers, a lot of those are, maybe they're people that tested here in Rendall County, but they actually live over in wherever. So those, those numbers, they might be reported as having tested positive here, but they actually live somewhere else and those numbers actually get pushed somewhere else. The more, the, the biggest things that we're looking at are first of all, we really want kids to be in the building. We, we, everybody knows, it's obvious, kids learn best when they are here. There's, there's no disputing that. And so we're really trying hard to look at these local numbers and, and make our, a best decision based on that. When you look at the local numbers, it doesn't, one thing it doesn't show is that we don't have a single student that we know of that has tested positive. We know not a single student has tested positive in Rendall County. I'm assuming if they tested positive somewhere else, they, their information would come to Rendall County. So as far as we know, we haven't had any students. We've only had two staff members test positive. And I, I got to be the first. It wasn't a race, but and so when we look at that, we feel that, that we're a healthy place to be. We work hard on, on making sure kids are washing their hands, wearing masks, distancing when possible, when possible. I'm starting, today I started going around and noticing that we need to do a little bit more reminding of that, hey, you guys got to have your masks on. I talked about, about six kids here today. And And, you know, we expect that, we're dealing with kids. It's just, it's one of the things we have to do. And it's so important that they understand that if, if we all want to keep coming to the building to learn, we've got to do whatever we can to keep everyone healthy. And, and, you know, that's, that's one of our big stresses, is how do we keep everybody healthy? So so anyway, the, the committee looks at that. And we've decided that it's, it's best to have kids still coming into the building. Is that gonna change, everybody, every day, somebody asks me, oh, what, do you think we're going to distance there? I, I don't know. I hope not. But we're gonna make the best decisions we can based on the data that's available to us right now and focusing on what's healthiest for our kids. Right now, their mental health is so much more important. And, and we're lucky enough to not have high, high infection numbers or any infection numbers in our school so that we're able to keep people coming. But when that starts to change, if that starts to change, we'll have to make a change to our plan. Any questions about the council?
I guess I can go into a little bit more detail about the elementary's doing, it's kind of in our, our plan or my, or report too. So we, we've met probably once a week for the last, I don't know, month, month and a half. I'm just starting, trying to figure out what's, what's best for us and how can we keep these, these students in the building? As you can see on the floor in here, if you walk down our hallway down towards the district office or the small gym, we've got markings in the hallway that show what's six feet. It's kind of interesting to watch an elementary class line up six feet apart, it'll take up the whole hallway. But that's, the students are really taking to that because we want to be here. In the gym, when they come in the morning, we've got, it's spread out now that there's a dot or a dash every six feet in the gym as well. We get a hundred and ten people in that gym at six feet on the floor. So that's a positive for us. Lunchroom, we've got dots on the lunch tables at the K one eat in the lunchroom. So they're spread out in the lunchroom as well. And we're really starting to spread out the classrooms to get that six feet from center of chair to center of chair. I, I can say I took apart one of our biggest classrooms, what thing was that last one? Wednesday last week, I took all the desks out of there and I started putting chair to chair, basically wall to wall, figure out how many students we could get in the classroom. And I can get twenty two to twenty three kids in a classroom, which is positive for us because that means we can keep everybody here.
What I think was kind of neat about, I walked down the hall and hearing all these desks he was taking out in the hallway. And I said, what are you doing? He said, I'm a visual learner. And so I said, does the classroom teacher know you're doing this? She was not in the room. And I thought she, he's tearing her classroom. He says, didn't answer me, just kept doing what he's gonna do. Then he comes in with a yardstick, starts macing every chair. And so then I cornered him when he was all said done, I said, now, does a teacher know you're doing it? Does she want you to do this? And he said, you know, she wants all those kids in her room. So Brett went ahead and he, he arranged it. And guess what? There's twenty two kids in that classroom right now and there's space what they're supposed to be. And so, so I think that's wow, you know, that's pretty neat to do that after school and the, and the teacher wasn't there. But the teacher came back and the teacher was there. So, so I think that's, I share, I wanted to share that because that's the things that these two are, are going through daily with, with COVID. We don't know where it's going. We don't have any clue. And I don't know if COVID knows where it is. But we got a plan. And so, so I really compliment him, but I had to tell you that story about it because I, I thought he was really working for kids with that scenario. He's working very hard putting scenarios together where we can keep the K through whatever in the building. And I think that's very key. I don't know how you're gonna send K through five or six or four home and do distant learning and be successful. And so I really thank them for the work that they're doing to keep this kids in, and, and like Jim said, you know, it takes a community support to keep the kids in this building. It's what they do when they leave is very key. They're, they're, they're still in a good environment, so. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
I guess when I think of a normal classroom, you know, a teacher's desk, you got some other work tables, those are completely out of the question this year. I told that, that teacher, she had a kidney table and a desk. I said, to do this, one has to go. So we're making, we're making, you know, changes as we go as well. But that's just to keep these kids here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The other issue they have is with staffing. You know, he's, he's got a big day coming up Wednesday. I think you said you had three teachers gonna be out and to get people to cover. You know, it's their, Jim is the same way. He's got the paras covering, watching classes and we've got teachers teaching from home for different reasons. And so, you know, everybody's pitching together and they're gonna try and, and get through this time.
I think maybe Dale is a good place to put in a, a plea to the public. If, if you, if you're looking for something to do, maybe you're retired and you've got a clean criminal record. We could use you. We could hire you as a, a para to help supervise classrooms. And it's really not that bad, especially at the high school. We've only got half of our kids there at a time. But our big concern is going to be what happens when, when staff starts to, to get sick. And, and like I've said a trillion times, not just the teachers, but we, we could use help if our custodial staff starts to get sick or if our cooks start to get sick. And so if there's anybody out there who is a, a good responsible person, good with kids, encourage them to apply for a para job on our website where you really could use that help.
It's really a, a need. And so we watch it every day. And, you know, it might not be the students that's gonna shut us down, you know, we don't have staff. Our custodial staff, our cooks. And I had a conversation, Margaret asked me, she said, what do you even do if we don't have enough food service personnel? What is the option? I says, is there a food service we can hire? You know, I don't know. And we talked this morning in our meeting about having a plan set if we're so many staff are out and we can't operate. What, what's our plan? And everything we've talked about, it's, it's all yabbas because we're in education, change constantly. You know, it isn't saying, well, we could send this service down the road to this other place. We can't do that. We oughta, it's here. So I don't know. I'm sorry.
No, I was just, it reminded me last week, I was sitting out, I needed gas, my car was almost empty. I was sweating a little bit. I didn't know if I was gonna make it to Casey's. And as I drove up, I, I'm looking outside and thinking, are they closed? I was very happy that their, their pumps were still working. But it, it got me thinking, it's, you know, what, what happens with us? Do we, do we close? I hope not. And that's where we really need some, some people from the community to help, help out. You, you, we could, if you sign, if you apply for a job, we don't need, we don't necessarily need to hire someone full time, even to, to be there as a backup in case we need you.
I, I mean, I can give one, one example that we've thrown around, I don't know how many of our meetings. Just say an elementary student gets it. Basically means the class is out. And it depends on, do they have this teacher, do they have this teacher? Do they have title, do they have, are they, are they a special education student? Or did they have piano music? So one student could ripple effect. Six staff members? Very easy.
And at the high school, it's even, it's even more complicated because that kid might see seven different teachers in a day. And if they're within close contact, which is within six feet for more than fifteen minutes, that could be instantly seven teachers going home. So.
Questions for these? You see that every day is different. And they don't even want to get up in the morning because their phone starts ringing. And so the only people they, we can miss during the day are the three of us. We only take a week off and we didn't even know he's gone.
All right, that's.
I kept looking for him all the time, let you think. The other thing is that when, when they're looking at changing plans, it's not just, you know, there's group, there's people involved in that decision, you know. If you're gonna go to different plans, you've got your advisory council that Jim talked about, and you've got our, the regional, it's Adam Marshall. So we've got the regional support group, that's the next chain of command. And then it goes to the State Department and the Department of Health. So they're all involved in making these decisions. And, and one thing the State Department really emphasizes, and I share this with you because I've heard the opposite, is that they want the decision to be made locally about whether you're, what plan you're on. And so I think that's important. They've got these numbers out and it's in the papers and everybody looks at those and they say this is, the state does not say, that's guidelines. And so they leave it up to this group here to work what is best for Bold School. And, and I think that's important for everybody to understand. And so it's not, we're looking at a lot of different things when we're thinking about it. The thing is that we want our kids to be safe and we feel we're providing a safe environment for them at Bold right now. And so we're gonna continue with that as long as we can. We know how important that teacher is in that classroom. You know, so you see what happened last spring, it was not pretty. I don't think anybody wants to go back to that. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bransley or anything else you would like to add to your report before we move on? Any questions for Mr. Bransley, Jeff or John? Do you have anything?
Nope, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Elementary principals report if there's anything, Brett, that you or Mr. Benson that you would like to add or any questions anyone would have for Mr. Benson.
Just quick over again, just talking with the staff on how we can keep the students here. That's been a big, big topic here the last month, month and a half. One thing we just recently finished is our fast data. So we test every student and the kid for just to see where they're at, to get us some more information to help guide their instruction. So we just completed that. We've got them in some different groups to help with that. So that's a big project off our, our plate. We do it three times a year. So we'll be doing it here again. It's hard to believe that January is not too far away, but we'll be doing it again here in January to, to monitor our growth, especially after last year we didn't have the M C As. So that's a big, big thing for us. And then the one, the one on one, we've got the, the iPad, so we all, we have to go home, we can do it. Anything for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Menton, do you have anything you would like to add or?
Well, I'll just real quick go through what, for the folks at home, what was in my report here. Just, I, I talked a little bit about hybrid learning. Still going pretty well. We've had some, some issues with attendance for some kids. Tom Cruz has been working really hard to, to meet with those kids. Unfortunately, we have had to refer probably about fifteen, twelve to fifteen kids to, to the county for truancy. So, but other, other than those cases where the instruction itself's going about as well as we can expect. Disciplinary issues I put in there. And this is something that we're seeing statewide is that you've taken half of your high school kids out. So half of them are hybrid at, at home, half of them are in the building still. So you'd think you'd cut your disciplinary issues in half, right? Well, through October twenty first of last year, we had twenty seven disciplinary incidents as reported by Skyward. And this year, through the same date, we've had one. So to, to us, that's been very interesting. I think it really shows the, the value of, of a smaller class size. And I think it also shows that kids want to be here. They don't want to be, they know that they could easily just be at home. And I think they're, I think people are much more, much better behaved right now. And just to be clear on this, when I say incidents reported in Skyward, we're not talking about a teacher had to talk to a kid about, about this or that or cheating or something. We're just talking about things that have actually been written up and sent to the, to the office in Skyward, so. Junior's took the P S A T test. Oh, uh, we had our weirdest homecoming that I've ever experienced in my life. And congratulations to King and Queen, Drew Sagatol and Megan Brummer. Every principal I know, we, we roll our eyes when talking about homecoming because selfishly, from our point of view, it's always just a, it's a, a crazy week. And from that perspective, you know, we think that we don't want it, but then when we have a homecoming like this, we, we really missed it. Every principal I've talked to has just been, been kind of awakened to the importance of it. Not that we didn't understand the importance of it, but when it was minimalized like it was, it was really kind of a sad thing. So hopefully we never have to worry about that again. And then last down here, I've got, Bold will be partnering with Public Health to host a flu shock clinic, sort of ironic. That'll be held on Tuesday, November third and Thursday, November fifth. That's to accommodate both the red and silver students. A form was, was emailed out. We just need to have that form returned and there, there's a shot.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Menton? All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to activities report, Mr. Flan.
I don't have anything to add unless there's questions.
All right. Does anybody have any questions on Mr. Flan's report? All right. Sounds like you're off the hook. Thank you very much.
Sorry, Jill, I was on, I was muted.
Yeah, you were.
I have a question for Derek.
Okay.
Derek, why was homecoming moved to New London?
The football game you're talking about.
Yes.
Okay.
Football game was moved because we had to make a decision on Thursday whether we were gonna be able to get the field ready. And at that point, we had no idea that, we couldn't guarantee that we'd be able to get the field ready. We played junior varsity out there tonight. I've still got white paint on my hands from trying to make it salvageable for the game today. And it would have been very difficult. We'd have been out there on all hours of the night trying to paint the field and trying to freeze it to the grass last Thursday night to try to make it happen. So it, and as hard as our custodial staff and a lot of the people are working right now, it just didn't seem justified to, to ask anybody to put in those kinds of hours when we had another option that we could use.
So did they charge us to do that or not?
Yes.
What was the cost, if I may ask?
Uh, it was seven hundred and fifty dollars for the field rental, the football boosters donated two hundred and fifty. And the other five hundred will come out of one less officiating crew that we'll use this year since we have a shorter season.
That was a, not an easy decision to make, but when you look at what it took to get our field ready, it, it was a no brainer and to make that decision on Thursday. And you look around the area, of our area, all the games that were played were played on artificial turf. It was not played on a river field. And Derek was in, we were going back and forth on Thursday and he wanted to make the decision before the end of the day, simply to be ready. And our staff couldn't have gotten that field ready. And if we would have, it wouldn't have been good to play on.
Yeah, and you know, Dan Gross. Yeah, and you know, Dan Gross probably spent four or five hours out there on the four-wheeler thread pushing up snow around to give us a chance, but. It just, it was not going to work.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. A school board committee report, does anyone have anything that they would like to report on? Questions or anything you've heard from anyone? All right, hearing nothing, we will move on. Pool board report, I'm guessing you guys have not met Jeff and John?
Right.
Okay.
We met last Monday.
They did?
To talk about the. Stuck with the locker room situation with like girls volleyball.
Okay, so you you were there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So Jamie, if you'd like to report on the pool board.
I wasn't there.
Okay, thank you. Well, Jamie.
We talked about how we can make it feasible for, and I'm not sure Derek to Tracy, get back to you.
Yes.
Okay. How we can make it feasible for the kids that are like the orca team that's in there swimming. Tracy said she was going to try to figure a way to make it work where they could just use the boys locker room. Everybody's masked. They're in, they're out, I mean, they get dressed, they change, they get out. Custodial staff will come in and clean up, so she was going to try to make everything work. Because they they were talking about doing a classroom and that and I'm like, I don't like that. I I think when our janitors are already spread them, why have them clean two rooms versus? One area, so she was going to try to make it work and then have her boys go to the boys locker room. Down the hall, but it would need to be monitored because those older boys come in and sometimes are boys. They're kids, so yeah, that was something that she was going to talk about, so.
Okay.
How did, how did that work out, Derek?
Didn't, we didn't have to worry about it right now because the game we had was Saturday. So there shouldn't have been anywhere there.
I was able to present the schools at our conference with the option of having a locker room on a schedule. Or having more free reign of a classroom. Which covers. Us from a conference standpoint, because we have to offer them a locker room, which we were able to do. Majority of them have opted for more flexibility, especially with volleyball, because you don't know when things will end necessarily. So at this point, I think. All of our remaining teams have opted to take a classroom instead of the locker room. But we were covered for the fact that we offered it to them, so we don't have to worry about, you know, a grievance with the conference or something that we're not. Fulfilling our requirements there. So it worked out really well. I was able to send it out to everybody as you can do A or B, and they all came back and said that the classroom would be fine in that situation.
Okay, thank you, Derek, for doing that.
Thank you. Anything else on pool board? All right, hearing nothing else, we're moving on to new business. Number one, approve the November twelfth, twenty twenty as the date to canvass the November third, twenty twenty election results.
So move Benson.
Motion is made by Sandy Benson.
Seconded.
Seconded by Sagatol. Mr. Bransway, you talked to Joy, what?
We, I remember when Joy and I said, we're trying to figure that date out, we selected the twelfth because our the county auditor said we should. Be as late as we could.
Okay.
And so we could go with the thirteenth or the twelfth, we could have the thirteenth, that's a Friday.
So half due within ten days.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Days, and so we went, he recommended that simply because all of the. That'll be that's coming in.
Okay.
So that's, that's the reason we selected the twelve and so. And that should be a short meeting, I would assume.
Yeah, it's usually a pretty quick process.
We don't have to tell them.
So.
Just to receive.
All right, any other discussion on that? Hearing nothing else, we will vote. We'll start with Jeff.
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
And Melissa?
Aye.
And I myself, I am an I. Motion carried. All right, number two. Is approve the resolution for closing of the Island Elementary Facility.
So move second.
Members Sagatol introduce the following resolution and move this adoption. Resolution closing Burn Island Elementary School. Whereas a public hearing was held on October nineteenth, twenty twenty on the proposed closing of the Burnup Elementary School. Whereas during this hearing, people wishing to give testimony for and against proposed closing were heard. And such testimony was considered by the school board and. Whereas published notice of this hearing was given in compliance with the Minnesota statute, section one twenty-three B. Point fifty-one subdivision five, therefore be a resolved by the school board of Independent School District number twenty-five thirty-four, Burn Island. Olivia Lake, as follows. Number one, the attached findings of fact and conclusion regarding the closing of Burn Island Elementary School are hereby adopted. Number two, closing, the closing of the Burn Island Elementary School is necessary and practicable. Number three, Burn Island Elementary School is closed effectively immediately. The motion for the adoption, the foregoing resolution was duly seconded by a member booked though. And upon a vote being taken there on. The following voted in favor thereof. And we will start with Sandy.
I'm kind of limo here and I'm going to say no, and there's that. The reason is.
We don't need the reason.
Yes, you do. I have every right to give a reason, Joe. It's not that I don't want to put kids back in there, but at this point before before we do a bond and find out what the whole community wants to do, I want to say no right now.
Tracy?
Aye.
John?
I want to make sure I know what I'm going on. Voting yes means to close it and a no means to not close it, correct?
Right.
Okay. My vote is to not close it. And.
Vote is no. Jamie?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jeff?
No.
My myself, I am an I. So we have. Four to three. Whereupon said resolution was declared duly passed and adopted.
Thanks, unfortunate, Joe. We we as a board members can't express a short comment on such a major issue.
It was a resolution. I don't know how else to, but I'm sorry if you.
You asked us to vote on it and.
But the resolution, I don't know how else to do it. There isn't. Mr. Bransway, help me out here. There isn't discussion time during a resolution.
That isn't a discussion, it's just an explanation of why you voted.
But that's.
You could. Vote has to be a vote yes or no. It's not a qualifying vote. But you can, after the motion is made and is seconded, then that could be a point of discussion.
Okay, but I also have to read the resolution, so.
You need to read the resolutions.
How I know how to do it, I'm sorry.
Then you can call for discussion. It's the vote is out and then you can discuss it all night long until somebody calls for the question. And so, yes, you can, from the time when it's made, the motion is made seconded, then you can have the discussion. And then when it's time, somebody calls for the question, that's when you vote. So. The thing is, you know, you've had your opportunity for discussion and you've spent some good discussions, some good time discussing that, so. But. The vote is yes or no. You can't, you can't qualify a vote.
So I apologize if I'm doing something wrong. If anybody would love to take over his chair, I would love to have you do it because this was not very easy, so. If you would like to have some time to discuss now, that would be great. Even though, I mean, the vote is is has passed and it is what it is, but. If you would like to, Jeff, John, Sandy, if you would like to qualify your vote, I, that's fine, or anybody else that called that voted yes. If you would like to say why you did.
Yes, I'd like to just for your statement received from an individual. Community this week, it says, please take a moment, this is addressed to the board. Please take a moment to consider what would have, what would happen to the community of Burn Island if you were to vote. To close the campus and please do what's best for this entire Bold District. Sometimes it's not always about finances, but instead it's about what's best for our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we've also talked about some really positive things to in closing this building that could happen.
I was going to say that I watched, Mr. Bransway had sent us the recording of the EDA and I'm, I got excited, you guys. It was, and if you didn't watch it, do it because it's it's actually super exciting. The ideas that this committee have come up with. Are awesome and they're so beneficial and they're so beneficial to everybody in the community. So watch it and and that's why, I mean, I didn't, yeah, I was on the fence and then I watched that this weekend and I went, this is cool. This is exciting. Barbara Marks and and oh, Richard?
Again, yeah.
Yeah, did awesome. Phenomenal job. The picture she had, there was a place where in the school, like I could picture down the one wing, how they could have lots, okay? Like apartments that were amazing. So that to me then got me excited to go, okay, if we can make all this work. This is going to be, this is going to be great. So that's, that's why I was like, yeah, I'm for this because that EDA, they rocked it.
And so not closing it. It just sits empty and it deteriorates further and we can't afford to.
It's not sitting empty. You're using the gym.
For the gym, but the rest of the school does not get used for anything.
And Sandy, they'll, they'll talk about how if you don't do. You know, like maybe getting some ventilation in there, like opening or turning on the exhaust fans, getting some of that air moving in there. And that's what this board's doing. What can we do so we don't deteriorate that anymore? So watch it because you will, it it's super exciting. It's, it gets you excited for the community and what this has to offer. There's a lot of things. It's, to me, I'm excited for it. I'm all in. I actually messaged Susie and said, I've got a dehumidifier and this really not. OSHA safe fan room if you need it.
That's what we're talking, and Danny's got a meeting at seventy-three tomorrow morning over in that building. And they're going to meet to see, to look at how they can close the old part off. Reserve the gymnasium in that hallway. It can't be used. You're closing the building. But you can still use parts of it that you're, that is, we're testing and it's, and it's comfortable. And that's the hangup is nineteen seventeen building. Wow. Nineteen seventeen people. Think of it. And and that one study that the city council had in Burn Island tells you that. You read it and says that the use of that building is is done with education. That was their. Submission. And so, you know, it's not easy. But I think what Jamie is saying, I've been impressed with that group.
Me too.
And and I think. Somebody on this board should be participating with that group. Because they're, they've got some good ideas and and they're going to be asking the district to help them. And I've told them all along, I'm not there to turn the key and walk away from that building. And I don't think anybody here wants to do that. So I think I'm speaking for the board. So I think when. And and what we're doing is Brown would voted and now we're having a discussion that's.
I know, but.
Don't worry about it, Joe. That's my fault.
John, if you want to go ahead and file a open meeting, whatever, we'll.
No, but I, I think there's, there's some things there that are good to say, and this is the discussion you need to have as a board.
And that was eye-opening to me and that's why I'm glad I watched it this weekend because I didn't know what the expectations are. And not to toot my boss's horn, but she's one smart cookie. There's a reason she is so, and Brian, I mean, they're, they're smart. There's a reason they are successful, guys. I mean, we're, when everybody was there pre-COVID, we're bursting at seams. We don't have room, so I, I'm not, I'm not trying, I am, because I just, I watching this, it was like, I'm so glad I watched it this weekend. Because it was eye-opening and it, it really was like, okay, I see the vision. This is so cool. There's so many opportunities. So that's what, that's what turned me. I wish everybody would have watched it before this. I do. Because. It was, it was good.
I guess I never realized you were sitting on a fence, Jamie.
You never asked.
That's not a fair, that's, I'm sorry, that's not a fair thing to say. That's, no.
It's okay. For me, I, I mean, just, and I, I'm so excited for the momentum that's going with this group. I mean, that certainly helps with this decision. Because I know there, there are opportunities there. I I continue to go back to the guiding recommendation by Australian committee of our kids being in one building. I don't care what building is it, we're in one building and. Talking about the excess school capacity, that really triggers with me because now that we have, we had the opportunity to see that all of our kids fit over here. I think we're being more physically responsible. I think, you know, it's, it's, you know, the operational, operational efficiencies. There's so many benefits to our staff and our students, our community, our parents, it's more convenient for them. We talked about that, the reduction of the costs that we're seeing. That to me helps me make this decision in in support of one of the one building. But the flip side is just knowing that there could be some really cool opportunities with this explanatory, you know, this committee in Burn Island. I, I think. It could be a really successful thing coming out of it. I, I don't know, I.
It could be better.
It could be a very good thing and knowing that we have some options, you know, if we do, you know, for this referendum, that we have some options to help them out with that space. I see that being a benefit as well. So that's where I'm with with my support on this. And then going back to, sorry, I, I'm like, going back to when we voted. Over a year ago in July, we voted. K, you know, pre-K through twelve, everybody voted yes to be in affiliation with the hospital. So to me, there was kind of like, okay, this is part of the process is closing that building first. And I, like I said, it was kind of, it was, it's hard. Ron Bailey nailed it when he said it's a grieving process. It is, and everybody grieves differently. But this, this is part of the process and it sucks, it does, but seeing what the EDA. Excites me and it made, it made my anxiety about this go down a lot.
And there's some good people on that committee that are really coming together as a team. And. And so I think that's, that's what come out of that group when I watched and and I give Barbara a lot of credit and and Richard for bringing that out. Because I think. They're looking at the future, they're looking at positive, and I think that's something. Where we're at, people.
My point is, and and you might not like it, I don't care, but what I think of is. I don't want the kids to go back in a building like that. That's not my point. The point is, is you. If you look at all this stuff that we have to do to it. You got a demo, it's six hundred thousand dollars. We're already using the gym. So couldn't we, why would we? Give, I mean, close it up, sell it and turn around and then re-lease it back? That makes no sense to me. We already owned it. We owned it free and clear and then you're going to turn around and want to lease it from somebody. To me, that, that's money that you throw out the window. So those are things I'm looking at, like it's. Money, finances, whatever you want to call it, but to me, that's like we just threw money out the window.
So.
If you're free and clear, but you're putting a lot of money.
It cuts our operational costs down, right, right? It would cut our, sorry, Tracy, you go ahead. I'm just saying, it's going to. If you would get it sold to someone else, it cuts down our operational costs. Right? Because operating two buildings is more expensive.
Yeah, but if you're.
But if we lease it, you're not going to be paying. You know, three hundred thousand dollars a year in operational fees, you're paying X amount of dollars to lease it, so it is a saving.
The only thing we're realistically doing over there is the gym. We're making sure the gym is perfect. So if the only thing we're worried about is the gym over there and that's the one thing that we're taking care of, then everything else isn't going to matter anyway.
That's not true.
I don't think anyone said.
No.
I don't think anyone's had to go like that, and that's what we're trying to do is. Get a handle on.
But the thing is, is why would we lease it back when we just already owned it? We didn't have.
Operational costs. We're cutting down on operational costs, right?
I mean. Oh, I don't expect our kids to go back in there like that. I would not even expect that. No.
But I don't know if we can afford to own. Why do we want to put that money in that building if you're.
Well, and I think too, just getting out of the meeting that I, when I watched, they will need some sort of. Correct me if I'm wrong, but what I gather is they need some sort of assistance from us. Correct me if I'm wrong, but what I gather is they need some sort of assistance from us. And what that looks like, I mean, that will be coming up, I would assume in future meetings.
I think you're, I think there's a lot of talk, a lot of discussions yet. And there's a lot of options, you know.
Yeah. And they may not be able to do anything with it, but just the ideas are awesome.
You might get an investor that'll come in there.
Two check, right?
No, you don't know. They're, they're, they're brainstorming a lot of different options. And so let them do that. Give them time. But. That building is costing us money.
I'd rather, I guess for me, they offered, they did offer to come. They, they told Dale, if you, if you would like some of us to come and talk about a few of these things, we'd be happy to do so.
I'm sure they would.
Susie can say that in the meeting before. So I can, if you want.
I think we're moving beyond where we're at.
Yep, we are. Anything else anyone wants to say before we move on? Okay, thank you. And I apologize for the way I handled it. I know how to do resolutions one way. I'm sorry. So again, the open, if anybody wants to be chair, you sure can. I will step down, so.
The thing is, it's, you say it's building, it's costing us anything. It's costing us a pile right now. The best thing for the school district would be is to sell that building and walk away from it like somebody else did. And I don't think you wanna do that at this point, but that's as far as being fiscally responsible for the districts. You've got the whole Bold District you're responsible for. And we have to think about that. So now if they've got a committee there doing the things that they're doing right now and they've got the leadership. Support it. And, and move forward with it. But it's costing us a pile, you know? Just the maintenance of that building, the cost of heating that building, the cost of the utilities, and we're not doing it over there. So it is costing us a lot of money. And we've gone through that. And Ryan has done a good job of, of giving us those figures. And so I think we need to seriously look at it and, and now you've made the decision. So, so we're gonna come together and, and work together to do what's best for Bold District.
All right, we're gonna move on to number three. Approve the Central Minnesota School CMCS transportation contract for the 2020, 2021 school year. I think closure number one. Motion is made by Bookdole.
Seconded by Olean.
Seconded by Olean. Any questions or discussion? It, it's a typical. It's what, four miles at .575 a mile times 172 days of school, so it's $395.60 that we have to reimburse, correct? That's what I'm seeing. So since we are in charge of transporting kids no matter, within our district, no matter where they are going, so. Something we have to do, so. All right, with that, any questions on that? Hearing nothing, we will begin with Sandy.
Hi.
Tracy?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. Number four, approve the insurance and compliance with the state and federal law prohibiting discrimination. Motion is made by Sagatow.
Seconded.
Seconded by Benson. Any questions on any of this? If you have any questions, you can ask Mr. Bransway. Looks like a state form that we have to fill out yearly. Federal form.
Insurance and compliance, it just says that for us to receive either, it needs to be involved in state or federal programs, we've gotta confirm, combine our discrimination as a policy of the.
All right. Lot of legal stuff. So we will begin with Tracy.
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
Jeff?
Right.
Sandy?
Hi.
I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. Number five, approve the 2019, 2021 EA master agreement between the Independent Schools District 2534 and the Bold EA. And I will remind you that that. Spot in the activities. Schedule, actually is the fine art, fine arts and academic schedule, page 31. Student council is not under level A, is under level E. So just wanna remind you of that. That was one of the points that you guys wanted to see fixed, so.
I'll make the motion, Joe.
Motion is made by Bookdole. I will second that. Any questions or discussion?
Go ahead, John.
Okay, I've got a, this is an observation. This is in regards to our base pay. In 1718, our base pay was $40,774. 18 and 19, our base pay was $40,774. 19 through 20, our base pay was $40,774. Our 2021 base pay is $40,774. That surprises me because historically boards have always wanted to have, and I'll use, mostly wanted to have, wanted to have a strong base to attract teachers out to their district. We haven't changed the base apparently in the last four years. I find that kind of counterproductive. On the one hand, I hear we can't find teachers. On the other hand, we're paying them $40,744 for the last four years. Same pay. I, I'm not, I might, I'm just calling that to your attention because it's gonna come back by, but. When you don't move up the base pay. At a, a certain rate, it appears, it appears to me we're not doing that now.
Okay, thank you. Sandy, you have something?
I just have one thing here on appendix A. There is an addition. I listened to the whole contract, word for word from each one. And they added on to the bottom, the ECFE teacher would also receive a $2,000 increase in the form of hourly rate increase, which is great. I'm glad they put them in there. I just want everybody aware that, that that's something that we didn't talk about, but it's in.
Ah, we didn't talk about that.
ECFE?
Yeah, we did.
In the teacher proposal.
Yep, we did talk about it because they are.
When you asked that question, Sandy, I went back and asked Lindsay, unless we do that, then that increases. She's a, I already have in there. So it was in there.
I'm glad it's in here. I'm glad it's in here.
It's just noted separately because they're hourly.
Right, and I know.
So that's, yeah.
And I just wanna.
Make sure they get the same.
Written in their last contract, but it is in this contract.
In the future, we might, we might wanna take a look at that again.
Right.
And so, but that, for right now, we just did the same percentage.
No, which is great. I, I agree with it. I'm proud. I just wanna make you aware. And then on appendix B dash one, they have a head dance team, a level A and a dance line. What's the difference? They added dance line under there.
It used to be dance line and then it switched to dance team.
Well, now they're both on here.
Well, but if we don't.
It's one of those where they put it in there. They're cheerleading. We don't have cheerleading, but it's in there because.
In case you ever do, in case you ever do, so you don't have to negotiate.
Team and dance line the same?
I don't.
Really don't need it?
Yeah, but.
Dance line shouldn't be in there.
That's something you don't have? Well, that's the old club.
So that is redundant, so.
Should we basically? We can just take that off and then.
So it's something that if it's in there, it would never be filled, so it wouldn't.
It wouldn't matter.
Wouldn't matter, but so it's gonna slow you down. You can.
How do I feel? I just wanted to make you aware.
Um, John, kind of in response to what you had said about the base pay, I totally agree with you and what you're saying. The teachers came to us with a proposal and we all felt on the negotiations committee that it was very fair. And we felt like they were kinda doing that just knowing the situation that the school is in right now. But yeah, I mean, maybe that's something to look at for the next, the next round.
So why, why haven't we, why haven't we done anything with the base pay, but we go on the high end?
It was an increase on the base pay. It was like the last time. A large increase on the base pay.
I don't know. I'd have to go back to that.
On the master agreement?
It's been, it's been a while because we were low on base pay, so we moved it up and then they felt that we were okay. That, that's what I got from the teachers, so.
We'll take a look at that.
Yeah.
It was 14, 17, 19 was 40. And 15, 17, let me check. My handy Daniel.
Yeah. 15 to 17, it was 37,774 for level. One for 15, 16, then it jumped to 40,744 in 16, 17. It's been that since 17, 19 and now 19.1.
All right, any other questions? Hearing nothing else, we will vote and we will begin with John.
No.
Jamie?
Hi.
Melissa?
I'm staying.
Jeff?
No.
Sandy?
Hi.
Tracy?
Hi.
And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. Five to two.
Five, two?
Yep. Oh, sorry. Four, two. Sorry, thank you for. All right.
Can I just make a comment?
Sure.
Thank the board for doing this. I, I think the teachers came in with a very respectable proposal when they started. And you respected that, John, and I appreciate that. And I, I think it says something that, says something about your staff here. For that first year, they froze everything, everything. And the increase, and this is what I've shared with the negotiating team, when they say the increase, that percent is total dollars. It is not on the salaries could rain like that. And I think this is the only organization in this public education, I think this is how they figure the rates. Because that's not true in the other organizations. And so I think, I appreciate the staff came in with that. And that they're, they're looking at the times. And, and when you go over the flat, nothing that first year, that was a big help for the district. And so I, I think I thank them for doing that and I thank you people for supporting that. I think you're making a statement about bold. And I think you've got a staff, a very dedicated staff. And you see what they're doing right now. And my concern right now. And I was gonna share this with the principals when they had been talking, but is the stress that's out here right now with the staff. And we got stressed with kids, the staff and the parents. We're in a real tough air right now. And we gotta figure out how we can get everybody through this time. And we're gonna make it. And I think we do it together. Thank you for, for approving it tonight. And now we'll go back to the teachers for their approval. And you turn right around the corner and you're being negotiating again.
Yep. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to upcoming dates, November 3rd, 2020 is election day. November 9th, I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we'll be, we'll be having a work session November 9th. It is a, I don't even know what day that is. Must be a Monday. With Ryan. We need to get that done before the, if we're going to submit a review and comment, he would like more input from us. So that is November 9th. November 12th is a Thursday. And we need to canvas those school board election results. We have not set a time for that yet. It should not be a very, it should be a very short meeting. So if somebody would like to. Suggest a time.
Joe, what time is the work session with Ryan and Mike?
I don't know yet.
Can that be five o'clock? That's what I told Ryan. Five o'clock work?
Every, every single time I sign up to give blood.
Yeah.
And then they keep calling me every, oh my, anyway, sorry.
We can go later if you need.
Nope, 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 that's fine. I like the Red Cross calling me. November 9th, 2020, Monday at 5:00 PM. November 12th. You know, 6:00 PM. What, I mean, like I said, it's going to be very short.
Doesn't matter to me.
We'll put it tentatively at 6, unless Mr. Bransway hears something different. On November 23rd, our normal school board meeting, 7:00 PM here in Media Center and on Zoom. Moving on, last item on the agenda is adopt resolutions to acknowledge and accept gifts, grants and bequests. And you guys can tell me where you wanna have discussion because. Hard to do on a resolution, so. Member Hanson introduced the following resolution and moved it station. Whereas anonymous donor has generously, generously donated $940 towards the Bold volleyball team for new uniforms. Whereas rural computer consultant has generously donated $455 towards the Bold robotics team. Therefore, be it resolved by the Bold School Board gratefully accept this gift. The motion of the adoption of the foregoing resolution was duly seconded by member. Olean. And if you'd like to have some discussion, I'll, we can do that now.
Yeah, Joe. Do we, do we have to do these separately or?
No. No, this is a resolution.
Yeah, but it's.
The same every. We do.
For two of them?
Yeah, we do this the same every time we have, yes.
I thought it was just one per each one. Sorry.
That donation's on one reservation.
Yeah.
If, if there's a need, you know, you could, if you wanna, that's up to you to whether you wanna go separate.
I.
This is fine if this is legal, that's fine.
Done it every month.
All right, that's fine. I just asked.
Well, I, I would like to thank these, the anonymous donor and the rural computer consultants for their, for their generous donations.
I would also.
Thanks. All right, so we can vote and we will start with Jamie.
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Sandy?
Hi.
Tracy?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
I myself, I am an I. Going resolution was approved this 26th day of October 2020. And we will, I'm gonna make the motion to adjourn. I'm gonna like to second that. Seconded by Sagatow. Any discussion or questions, vote that much. Hearing nothing, we will vote and we'll begin with Melissa.
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Andy?
Hi.
Tracy?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
And I myself, I am an I. We are adjourned at 8:33 PM. Thank you all and have a great night.